Follow the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board, Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 13. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Mr. Delbin?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
And it's Channel 15.
What did I say?
13.
Channel 15. Michael, were you going to speak now?
Yes.
Before starting citizen participation, a statement from Mr. Milonowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a very appropriate right after the community prayer. Of course, it's critically important to address any issues that a state government brings up about a local government, including a notice of enforcement conference that is designed to provide an opportunity to discuss the alleged violations. However, it is unfortunate that in today's social media society, via Facebook's group's "Fair and Open Government for Carver," has regressed to performing as the judge, jury, and executioner without consideration of the full story and accurate evidence. Let's think about this for a moment. Is this what we want our town, is this what our town wants? Believe in the majority of our town still believes in the truth. I offer the following for your consideration as town administrator to provide context and what actually transpired. Two items broke down in this process. First, DEP inadvertently posted online a draft administrative consent order with penalty and notice of noncompliance that they, that they are investigating. DEP is trying to determine how, over the holidays, this was posted when both parties have had not had a chance to meet and discuss what was drafted, and they believed they have reviewed. Second, my administration did not process this document given other time-sensitive issue, items, nor opened it until they provided me a copy at 8:46 this morning. Normally, when a document like this is received, I would provide notification, like I normally would do, to the chair of the Select Board. Both actions were human errors. Over the holidays, both agencies put mech, have, will be putting mechanisms in place to assure this does not happen again and improve the process. As a result, this, this, these process, of these process breakdowns, DEP has postponed the meeting set for tomorrow morning for over a couple weeks. At the conclusion of that meeting, the Select Board will be notified, as well as the public, of any outcome that comes out of that meeting. To the Facebook jury, as part of my commitment to Carver's team of dedicated staff and our professionalism, if there are any fines that staff reporting to me, consultants reporting to my staff or I, or that I personally made, I will take responsibility and accountability for that fine and reduce my souring budget line item in time accordingly to pay that fine. Now to the important issue of public safety. Mass DEP has drinking water standards for private wells. To date, none of the private drinking water wells have ever exceeded the DEP drinking water standards for 1,4 dioxide. In fact, our most recent test done on December 9th, 2019, less than a month ago, confirms again that nothing exceeded those regulations. On the back of this page, I've attached a memo dated 8/619 for background for the town's consultants. That concludes, the town has continued to sample from the private wells every six months. To date, none of the samples collected from the private wells have had a concentration of 1,4 dioxide exceeding the drinking water guidelines. The results will be reported to Mass DEP with copies provided to the residents. If there is an exceedance of guidelines, the town will take appropriate and corrective actions. And those actions right now the town are doing is actually providing bottled water to these people that they're not required to do, and we've been doing that for a while. Now, in regard to the administrative consent order with penalty and notification compliance, there are two items DEP wants resolution on. I've talked to DEP today. First, did all three houses receive bottled water the town volunteered we would provide to them, or just two houses and a third house was provided water after the first two? They want clarification on that. We're going to provide that clarification. Second, did all three houses receive the reports that show they did not exceed the standard DEP has established for drinking, for GW1 drinking water standards? They just want some more clarification if they receive the reports. Those are the two items that DEP is asking for. According to DEP, the penalty that was included in the draft ACOP was calculated based upon Mass DEP's understanding of the facts, and it's not like, it's not likely the final penalty, the final amount. The purpose of the enforcement conference is to provide the town with an opportunity to discuss the alleged violations and reach a negotiated settlement if warranted or dismissed. That's my statement, Mr. Chairman.
All right. That clarifies what we've been through today. Citizen participation, this is a moment we set aside, 10 minutes at the start of the meeting, for any citizens that would like to address the board. We ask that you keep this time to about three minutes in order to give other citizens the opportunity to speak. Was there anyone that wanted to address the board this evening? There being no one, we're scheduled for a joint meeting with the Housing Authority? Do we have members of the Housing Authority? Do we have a member of the Housing Authority?
I'm also a member of the Housing.
Ah, okay. So is that?
So you have to sit on this side right now.
Is that?
Because that side needs a core of this side, or closer to it.
How many members are there on the, three? So you have two, so we have a quorum with two.
Quorum of the city.
Well, there are, the Housing Authority consists of five members. Two of the spots are currently vacant, so I'm not sure we have a quorum even with the two of us here. I still think a quorum is three.
Okay. But it's a joint vote?
Joint vote, yes.
So then is it legal for us to vote if the Housing Authority does not have a quorum?
Also me, means of necessity, they can't help it.
All right, I just want clarification before we move forward.
Well, if there's two vacancies, then you, so right now you only have three members on your committee?
You have three members, correct.
So then two would be a quorum.
Well, that would be my view on the thing, is that the majority of the city members that are there do meet that. Some boards do have, that you have to have seven members that's in there. With the authorities, it's generally who's sitting there that's there. So, but at the end of the day, it's the majority vote of the two boards together, who's ever here, makes the determination. And this was brought to our attention to at least provide another person, and hopefully a second person, that would fill in up until the elections. So there's only a temporary appointment up until the April elections.
All right. So we, you, we have an application from Ellen Sodillo to, I'm sorry, yes, for Ellen Sodillo to fill the vacancy until the annual town election. Would anyone have any questions for Ellen?
Is she here?
Yes.
Ellen's here, and I think.
Oh, okay.
Ellen, do you want to, do you want to come sit up here?
Where do you want me?
Might you take my seat?
Either one. Or George's seat.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you hiding behind George.
I know. Well, hope you all had a good New Year and Christmas holiday.
Thank you very much.
And after, the last time I was here, I was determined to find the right place for me, and I'm hoping that, you know, helping out on housing will be that one. My daughter actually lived in housing in the town for a while, so, you know, I do have some feelings about it, and I want to be able to share them with other people that are more knowledgeable than I was at the time, and I'm hoping that she'll let me be part of that.
Questions from the board?
No, I, I just really wanted to thank you publicly for, for coming back.
Oh, no problem.
And seeming to find your, your place.
Yes.
We could use help with housing, that's for sure.
Well, I, I would really be honored to be part of that because I have thought about this for a long time, truly, and I want to make it, you know, a more comfortable place for, for all the people that live there, and make sure it's a healthy environment, and make sure that we're able to get the help that we need to make it.
Any other questions from the board?
Again, I want to say thank you very much for stepping up for this, and I just, I'm very supportive of low income and affordable housing in this town, and thank you, and we need more of it. So anything you guys can do for it will help us along the way, including some changes to the bylaws, and take a look at it. Thank you.
Ellen has been very persistent in helping out on the recreation committee and wanting to take on additional responsibilities, and she's looking forward to this with your approval.
I just want to share my colleagues' appreciation for you wanting to step forward. Wish we had more people in town willing to come forward to go ahead and fill a lot of different vacancies we have. I mean, we've done very well with the finance committee now, finally had that up to 11 members, but, you know, the more we can have people come forward, you know, and even if they don't get the first one they want.
Right.
Still will be willing, like you are, to come back for another position. I really admire that, and I thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that you appreciate, so.
So is someone?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ellen's appointment.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Being none?
That's a joint motion of both boards.
Motion made and seconded, no further discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Stay seated, please.
The Housing Authority has a meeting tomorrow.
No, yeah.
You could go see the town clerk, you got sworn in.
Sure. Let me do that.
Please, but stay seated right, stay seated right now, though, because you're now up for an appointment to the registrar of voters for the Democratic Party.
And for the record, Mark only voted once.
So Ellen Sodillo has a, we're looking to appoint Ellen to the registrar of voters for the Democratic Party?
I move we approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you again.
Congratulations. A two per.
Thank you, I know, honest to God, who knew? But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And where am I going to get?
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Is she still there?
No, she's, no.
Tomorrow.
That's right, she's probably gone, that's right.
Ellen, the town clerk's office may be closed, but hopefully they're open tomorrow.
Okay.
Do we have the signed one for Jeff?
It's on the table over there.
I signed it.
Want me to go grab it?
Do I, I'd like to read it. Can you grab the thing from Jeff?
Okay.
No, she. We are acknowledging at this time the retirement of a longtime employee who has provided exceptional service to the town. Mr. Jeff LaBarnes is retiring, and Jeff, we invited Jeff to be here tonight, but he's a little humble and didn't feel comfortable being here, but we want to take the opportunity to, the Carver Select Board's certificate of recognition for Jeffrey LaBarnes for his dedication and hard work over 40 years for the town of Carver. January 2020, the Carver Select Board, we've all signed this, we will get this in Jeff's hands, and I've known Jeff probably since early, the early 1990s, and he has always gone, he always went the extra mile, and, and if you needed any additional help, he was always there. So thank you, Jeff, we appreciate all your service, and wish you a wonderful retirement.
Also, I'd like to note that Jeff, in the early days, was also a member of the Carver Fire Department. So that was just another way he helped serve the town.
If I could point out, too, that his 40 years of service and dedication and caring, I mean, he really truly cares about this town.
Mm-hmm.
And I know also that Jeff can fix everything, and that's.
I'm sorry, what?
He can fix anything and everything, and that's what he did.
So thank you again, Jeff, and have a wonderful retirement. We move on to items that may or may not be voted on by the Select Board. The first is the computer use policy, which is provided to you in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we adopt the, the policy on cyber use policy.
I second that.
Or the session, at least.
All right, and we move to discussion.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, I have a number of items, so I don't know whether this is something that you would all like me to send out to you and maybe vote on it next time, because there's quite a few, I have quite a few kind of.
Can you give us the highlights? I, if you have that many suggested amendments, we're not going to have an opportunity, I think, to digest it, but can you give us the highlights as to where you think the policy is flawed?
Yes, it, well, it, one of the, one of the issues is it talks about the town and who, who exactly is the town? I know that sounds like I'm being foolish, but who enforces some of these, I guess is what I'm saying, because if every employee is, is here and is a user, then, so, in other words, the town reserves the right to monitor and record the uses of all facilities and equipment. So who is, who is that person, the town? Because I know it's not me. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Can I address these as we go, or do you want to just listen to them all?
Well, I, I, I mean, I just, just the highlights for now, you can submit them all to us, and then we can ask questions as we go. I, I mean, I mean, you know, when, for instance, if I worked for, when I worked for Liberty Mutual, I got a similar type of policy telling me that Liberty Mutual reserves the right to review my, anything that's on my computer, and anything I do with my computer.
If you will let me finish.
Excuse me, just, with all due respect, sir, because I, you know, I want to hear what these are, but I think if they're general topics like the one you just asked, I think Elaine is here.
Well, if I could just finish with the next one that's related.
Okay.
So, and this is on page two, the second bullet point. It says, in beginning in the middle of a sentence, unless given consent, either verbal or written by the owner, period. But right above that, it says that the town is the owner. So clearly, the word owner in this case is of a person giving consent, is not the town. In other words, the words aren't very specific, and I think they need to be. Third bullet point, to gain unauthorized access. Is there a definition in there of unauthorized? I mean, who decide? I didn't see it, so.
Oh, was there a definition, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fourth bullet point, it says you can't do it via thumb drive. So does that mean people can't, so if I get, if someone here, working here gets a large file, and they want to download it and take it to someone else's computer because it's not email-able, they can't do that? You know what I mean? It's just not clear.
Okay.
Page two, the ninth bullet point, slanderous and defamatory. I just would like to know exactly what that means. Images that, or text that could be considered to, so, I think there's a lot of words in here, unfortunately, even like the word obscene, by whose definition? I think that needs to be more clear. Page three, under email, first paragraph, management and other authorized staff have the right to access any material in your email or on your computer at any time. But management isn't defined? So is that all the department heads, or is that just, you know, the town administrator? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. So what I'd ask you to do, though, is to email that out.
I will.
With attaching your sort of explanation exactly what the questions are, so that we can then respond, get that out to everybody, so at the next meeting, it'll at least be clear, hopefully, what the issues are, and then we can vote on whether we like it or not. Okay?
That sounds good.
All right, we'll move to the harassment policy. What's the pleasure of the board?
Do we need to take, since we had a motion on that previous one?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it till next.
I'll second.
All right. Although, any further discussion on tabling the computer policy, computer use policy? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Harassment policy, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we adopt the town of Carver discriminatory harassment policy. Second.
Further discussion?
So we just got new highlighted portions on this to us for gossip, and I kind of have an issue with the gossip of, in a form of harassing. First Amendment speech is extremely important to me and to the residents, that they have a right to speak out, and they shouldn't have to be tongue-tied and stopped. So what one person feels is gossip may not be for somebody else. So I think that's totally, that needs to go.
So can I address that? Is that your only issue, or do you have other issues?
Huh? Well, that's the only thing that I.
That's the only change.
It's pretty much self-explanatory for the other stuff that's been in there, but this being new.
So I think you're reading it in a different context, which I did not think of. The Society of Human Resource Management has written five articles, in 2019 only, on gossip and how it's a form of harassment and bullying in the workplace between employees. And I did not look at it from that aspect, outside of the office. I met with our risk management person from our insurance company today, and she, this is why the, I did submit the changes tonight, because I originally was going to wait and work on how to word this better, and she recommended doing it, and she liked that we were being proactive and reducing risk for the town. A policy like this will protect the town if you have an employee who creates a hostile environment through gossip. But hearing what you're saying, I can go back and maybe make it more specific.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Someone want to make a motion to table?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment on that.
Sure.
I agree with Bob, people have a right to speak, but when you're an employee in a municipality and in the work environment, I say I don't believe that that right carries into everything. So I have a problem with gossip, because I've seen how gossip in a work environment. Outside of the work environment, you're right, they've got a First Amendment right, but I have a problem with gossip in a work environment. That's why I don't have a problem with this.
So maybe we should specify that we're talking about gossip in a work environment, because it doesn't.
All right, so Elaine's going to rework it and, and, someone want to make a motion to table the.
I move a table for a week.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Discussion of the board's practice of attaching documents provided by residents participating in citizen participation in the minutes of that board meeting. This has been our policy, it has, we've had some discussions in recent meetings. I put this here to give the board the opportunity, if they want to change that policy, that now would be the time to make that determination. Ms. Huens?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I actually, I'm not sure that we can change that, because in open meeting law, section, not section 21, section 22, meeting minutes, records, et cetera, paragraph D and E address this issue, and paragraph D talks about documents used by the body, meaning the Select Board in this case, but then paragraph E says, "And all documents and exhibits used at the session shall be public records in their entirety and not exempt from disclosure." So I think we have to do it.
I, I don't, I don't disagree.
I actually have, Mr. Chairman, different take on that, because, number one, I was never given that original document, so not all the board members were given it.
Well, that's.
Number, number one.
All right, well, let me just say, though, normally, none of us get it ahead of time. Normally, it's submitted by the person speaking.
The other thing is, is that under our personnel guidelines, all right, that anything dealing with person's character is not to be released, correct? It's public, it's not public record when you start talking about people putting allegations against you.
I, I, you, you emailed it to me, Bob, and I understand it, but in past practice, at one point or another, most of the members of the board have had the experience where we have been taken to task at citizens' participation, documents have been submitted, and that's just been, you know, basically, our lot as politicians is sometimes that people are going to not like us, and they're going to say they don't like us, and it's going to come across as a personal attack, but it's, in their mind, it's an opinion.
And I understand it's their opinion. The problem is, what was submitted here, that I didn't get a copy of at that meeting.
You keep saying you didn't get a copy of.
Well, you had a copy of it, because it went to you.
But it wasn't an official, it wasn't, it was sent to me just as a regular document. I, I get stuff all the time, Bob, I don't send it out to everybody.
Well, that's what, I think that's what may be part of the problem, is maybe you should be sending things out to us.
Well, no, I don't get things like that all the time. I thought that was sent to me just for whatever reason. But in the future, however, if I receive something from somebody, I will send it out to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think in this particular item, though, all we're discussing is citizens' participation, and would it be possible, I understand Sarah's reading of that, that item, because I, I agree with the reading, but I wonder if we could simply adopt a policy that if somebody wants to submit a document along with their citizens' participation, that they make a copy for all members of the board?
Well, it's.
Well, Bob's point is that it was, some people knew about it in advance.
Right, I, I understand that.
So that's a, that's a different issue than people that just read a statement and then provide the statement to us.
So, so the agenda item is talking about the board's practice of attaching documents.
Correct.
And I was not making a point, actually, I was reading from open.
Well, I understand.
It basically says we have to do that.
Well, I understand that, I'm just wondering.
I think you were addressing the idea that if there is something that comes out ahead of time.
If somebody wants, I understand, if, if somebody wants to address citizens' participation and has a document that they want attached to the minutes, that they make a copy for all members of the board. That's, that's all.
They have, we have to attach it to the minutes. That's what I'm reading.
Well, I understand that. I just think at the time, instead of one copy, they could provide.
Well, but again, I don't think that was Bob's point. I think Bob's point was that he would have liked to have seen it ahead of time, if other people had seen it ahead of time.
Not only ahead of time, just when the person was here making the comments. I mean, I know the policy, I think, was in the past, that you did have to have enough copies for everyone here at the board, that if you're going to submit something else to the board, you have to have copies to them.
When you were off for a few years, it was a policy.
That, that what? That someone participating in citizens' participation had to provide a copy of what they were going to say?
Whatever documents were used.
Just a document, just if they, not, not a, you know.
All right, well, I mean, some people submit to us what they read. So are we saying that they have to hand out what they're going to read to us?
Well, if they, if they're going to, if they're going to submit it as an attachment to the minutes, then yes, they have to submit us a copy of it.
So, but I'm, I'm still going back to this bullet item, and I get what you're saying, Bob, but I think we're talking about attaching documents provided by residents participating in citizens' participation.
Correct.
And open meeting law says we have to attach those.
Have to do it, and I understand.
It's a separate issue from Bob's issue, which is a really valid issue as well.
Well, perhaps then at the start of a citizen participation, what I can do in the future, again, because Sarah's correct, this is off point, but just, I'll just mention, since it's somewhat on topic, that I can ask someone about to speak to us, if they have documents to provide, can we get copies of them that can be distributed while they're participating in citizens' participation?
Can I make a suggestion? Can we just put that in the footnotes down here, that if people in public session are going to do that, we request them to do documents? You're requesting, you can't demand it, you can request it.
I, I think that's.
And then you don't have to answer that, ask that every time.
All right, but getting back to the original point, I, my reading, I am sort of in agreement with Sarah, that I don't think we actually have a choice on this.
We don't.
However.
I agree. We don't have a choice. If someone turns around and puts something into the, the meeting and submits it to everyone, it has to be attached to the file for it.
Well, even if they don't submit it to everyone, if they read a statement at the meeting, all documents and exhibits used at the session, so.
Well, I think that's, that's concerning us here. When we have someone, when we have someone coming up there and talks and talks about it, then it's up for the secretary to turn around and type it in to.
No, no, Bob, because, I don't think so. Because paragraph D talks about documents used by the body at an open or executive session.
Right. I mean, if they, it's, the citizen can have a copy of what they read and submit it and say, I'd like this attached to the minutes.
No, it has to be attached.
Let's say, all right, so they would, if they have something and they give it to us, but they, but they can also just read a statement and they don't have to give us the copy.
If, not if it's a printed document, this says all documents and exhibits.
But if someone has just their own notes on a piece of paper.
I think notes are different.
I think there's, I think we're missing the point here of two separate types of individuals. We have citizens here and then we have the government here. Okay, that's actually running. The body is us here. The person sitting over there is not the body. All right, they're coming before us and they're going to speak to us. I totally understand what you're saying, Ron. If someone's going to come in here and read a statement off, they read the statement, fine, here you go, and they walk away, all right, we can't attach, we can't say, hey, give us that document here, it's their property, we can't take it away from them. If they want to give it to us, then that's fine.
No, I think this indicates that if they're going to be reading a prepared document, that that has to go into the minutes.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you what, I, let me, let me see if there's anything at the Attorney General's level that might address exactly how you define it, but in my mind, the way I was looking at this is if the person, the citizen gives it to us and says, I want this attached to the minutes, we have to do that. We don't have a choice.
I agree.
That's my, that's my interpretation of what we're trying to do here. I will look into it, Sarah, to find out whether or not any prepared statement utilized, they must provide us as opposed to can provide us. I think that's a distinction.
There is, there is a number you can call.
Just a, for instance, I've been to the State House and I've been to hearings numerous times, okay? And I go there with my prepared statement and I go ahead and I speak to them right then and there. Sometimes I'll hand them the documents that I'm going to read from, sometimes I don't. They don't ask for a copy of it right then and there. I mean, if, if we were required to do it, then fine, but it's up to the individual that's sitting across the table from us. If they want to give it to us and have it attached to the file, then it's something that they want it done. If they don't, then they just let their words speak and that's it. That's my feeling.
I mean, that's, that's my feeling as to the correct interpretation. It seems harsh that someone sits there, a citizen sits there, reads something to us and is walking out and we're scampering after them, saying, give us that document, you have to provide it to us.
I think maybe you should ask the AG's office because, you know, the legislature does sometimes get away with a lot of stuff that we aren't allowed to.
All right, so I will, I will ask that question specifically. In the meantime, I don't, it doesn't sound as if we have any problem with that one. The next discussion item is whether an agenda item should be placed or can be placed on a future board meeting to allow a board member that was the subject of a citizen participation or documentation provided as part of citizens' participation to respond to what was said, what was stated or the documentation provided. Again, our past practice has been, we have never done that. Partly, we've, we don't respond to citizens' participation because it's an open meeting law violation. And we have never, in the past, allowed, or I'm not even sure anybody's ever asked, to have an agenda item to respond to something that was stated, said at a previous board meeting. So, I put that on there because it became an issue and I thought the board should have a discussion about it and if the board wants to, I think it's good for the board to have an understanding as to what our policy is.
Mr. Chairman, so, two things I think that you're mistaken about. Number one is, if a citizen comes up here and they talk and they ask a question or they want to have information from us, the open meeting law doesn't preclude us from going ahead and answering those questions or discussing back and forth to the person. We can always turn around and say, you got a good point, we're going to put it on your next agenda, can you come back? Okay, we always have that ability to do that. All right, but because a citizen goes up there and speaks, the 48 hour rule comes into play. If you didn't know within 48 hours, the chairman, that this was going to be discussed, then we have the opportunity, we could still discuss it because of the 48 hour rule.
I disagree with that. I think the Attorney General was very clear on the fact that someone, a citizen coming in with some topic does not, does not qualify on the time needed basis for violating the 48 hour rule. And I thought, when you appealed to the Attorney General's office and got their reply, I think they were very specific on that.
They were. They didn't say you couldn't.
The last thing I'm going to do, Bob, especially with you, is to be, is just, is to be, have a loose interpretation of what an open meeting law violation is.
I'm just saying is that, from that determination that was given, all right, they didn't say you couldn't do it.
They highly recommend it against it.
They do highly recommend that it be put on the next, not against it, put it on the next agenda.
Anyway, but in this case, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the opportunity for you, for a board member to respond to criticism that they received at a prior meeting.
Okay. So, what happened here is that the criticism, for me, with this email that got sent to you, all right, and to Mr. Milonowski and to Elaine, all right, that this was never presented to me and even through our harassment policy, should have been, quote, investigated because those are the terms that she wrote in this, all right? So, therefore, this is about my personal character. When you start talking about someone's personal character, all right, here, then there's a problem because then you move into that wonderful little category of rights, personnel rights. And I have personnel rights too. What was, and now that it's been put into the record here for it, that now, how can I respond to something that, number one, I didn't get, which I should have got?
Well, Bob, get away from that because no one intentionally denied it to you. There was no, there was no conspiracy, let's not give this to Bob, okay? I, I saw it ahead of time, but I see a lot of stuff that, that, I don't take them, I didn't consider it a formal submission to the board.
Ron, I, I kind of take umbrage with your.
I understand that.
Saying that, that Bob is talking about a conspiracy. I think that there are rights, and if someone's going to be talking about someone's personality, personal character and that sort of thing, they have a right to 48 hours notice, they have the right to a lawyer, and they have the right to have it.
We already addressed this after Alan Germain asked you to resign and, and called for your resignation. I was told in the future not to let people continue if it got mean spirited, and I have attempted to do that. In fact, if you remember, when Ms. Farand was addressing the board, I stopped her halfway through, all right? So, that, that's all we can do.
But you stopped her halfway through, but you still allowed this to go through.
Because we just established any documentation that they want to submit has to be submitted.
When it gets put out, it has to be redacted because that's personal characters against me for her feelings.
I think everyone up here has had this sort of thing stated against them. Sarah, Alan Germain, you know, asked for Sarah's resignation and had a whole litany of accusations within it. And there was no, you know, we, it has not been the policy of the board, it's, again, it's out here for discussion. If the board wants to start setting aside time for individual members who feel that they have been maligned in a previous citizen participation, to put an agenda item on to respond to it, I am open to discussing that, if that's what the board wants to do. I think it's a slippery slope. I think we're politicians, we are subject to this sort of thing, and we, and I know in my time, you know, and I've been ripped apart any number of times, and it's frustrating not to, not to be able to publicly respond. But that has just been the, the way the board has, has acted in the past. If the board wants to change that, then that's fine. Mr. Dunham?
Be careful, Bob, we'll get an AED, but I agree with Bob to a certain extent. I think anytime that a accusation is leveled against a board member, should be an agenda item on the next meeting. And the person leveling the accusation should be asked to come back. And the board member, I know you disagree with it, I'm just giving you my opinion. But, you know, there's such times because it is, I know you, you know, as a politician, you're subject to the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune, but there's still some times where, damn it all, you want to have a chance to defend yourself. So, I mean, that's, we're here talking about our opinions on it, so.
And just to go further with this is that, in this one, it stated about their job that they're in. Well, I have a job too, okay? And some of the accusations in.
But, this is what I'm saying is.
But this is what I'm saying is that.
Not yours specifically.
But it was brought out by this. So, you have to understand is that if someone's going to make an accusation against somebody, then you need to be able to respond. You need to have an opportunity to respond, but you're going to be able to respond effectively and to understand what was going on, all right? When you're sidelined and you don't know what's going on and then all these things come out, and then when you finally see it after the fact, it's not a good thing.
Again, if, if you go that route, then I want the, it would be good to have the person here and I want to give and take back and forth because otherwise you're going to have one person saying, this is what happened, and the other person says, no, this is what happened, they're wrong, no, you're wrong.
That's why I said the other person had to, has to be here.
Yeah, that'll riveting television to have the member of the board and a citizen just going back and forth at each other. That'll, that's really going to propel the business function of this board forward. But at any rate.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just offer a suggestion?
I don't think it's a good idea, but go ahead.
I'm going to give it a try anyway. I think what we do need to do is get a little legal opinion on what's happening here. What I've heard today is that members have right in 48 hours notice if somebody says something. I'm not quite sure that's actually true for elected officials. Certainly if you're being removed from a board or brought up for discipline, then you do have the 48 hours. But if a citizen makes a statement, I'm not sure that applies. So, I think we should get a little bit of guidance from counsel. There's a bunch of legal.
Yeah, but I'm not sure the 48 hours is really the, the major issue here. The issue here is really the ability to set an agenda item at a following meeting to address what someone said in citizens' participation.
I think it'd be a fine idea to get an opinion from the legal counsel.
I agree. I also think it's something we should know where the ground is. I think we should get an opinion as well.
All right, if, with the board's pleasure, I will try to get an opinion as to whether or not we're on, from the Attorney General's office and/or counsel, as to whether or not we're on good ground if we decide to change our policy. Report at the next board meeting and then we can have a vote at that time if we've determined that that's available to us. Is that acceptable?
Fair to me.
All right. We move on to a discussion of a new process for citizens' participation. This is Mr. Belbin.
So, I handed out everyone a copy of, this would be, if it happened in this year, that's what this is reflecting.
All right, so you're not proposing it for this year?
Not proposing it.
This is just a hypothetical.
This is a hypothetical. If you're interested in doing it, okay, I can borrow this for two seconds because I didn't bring my copy. All right, so, the typically way it does is you get your petition, you send it to the clerk's office, clerk's office sends it up here, all right, and then we vote on it and goes forward, all right? That would still go forward. It would change to the fact that when it goes to town council, okay, town council will have to go ahead and put in the reason why it fails to meet the criteria or, and to give suggestions that gives the town council the opportunity to call that person and say, hey, this is the issues with it and whatnot. Allows it to come back to that petitioner. That petitioner can go ahead and then go seek out the changes, get another set of 10 signatures, bring it back to the clerk's office, have it signed off to the clerks, brought it back up here to us, and then we go forward with it. This is a fair solution to bringing stuff forward and not finding out until town meeting that, oh, well, this is wrong or that's wrong. It gives the residents a level playing field with the government and the government a level playing field with its residents. The timeframes that I put out here are pretty good. I put on the bottom, if it was 2020, what those deadlines would be. Of course, we're not doing it this year, all right? But I put this out here so you guys can look at it, think about it if you're interested, and then we can talk about it at a later date for it. But I think that if someone's going to fill out a petition article and they're so interested in doing something, all right, to help our town in some way, shape or form, then we should give the same availabilities as the town does.
All right, so I think we can, we can come back to this. I think it's a, it's a good layup. The first thing that strikes me though is I think we're, the deadline needs to be adjusted. It's a little late because we, we're trying to make sure everything is in place 30 days prior to town meeting. So, we might, you know, I mean, one of the things we can discuss is the time, is the timeline.
Correct.
And I've always had a problem, as you know, with the, the idea that taxpayer money is going to pay for citizens that, or anybody that wants to enter a petition, it doesn't have to be citizens, it can be anybody that gives us a petition. So, that's just my initial take, but that's, again, we will bring this back up at a later date. People haven't had a chance to absorb it and we can discuss it at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That is the end of the select board votes. We go to the town administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a couple updates. Let's see, we received for the complete streets program, we received a score of 98.
Where is that?
I'm just giving some general updates right now that just came in today.
I think we obviously have to stick to what's on the, on the agenda.
So, I was going to talk about the Green Communities Act and just update you on that and this.
I'm afraid you, that'll have to wait to the next meeting.
Well, that's a disappointment for the public, okay.
And yet it meets open meeting law requirements.
And under the new ones, yes. All right, let's move forward then. Specifically, as written down here is that both Elaine and the town clerk have been reviewing and interviewing people for the town clerk's position. We're hopeful that either later this week or next week, we'll be in a position to make recommendations and to extend offers to hopefully two people. So, that is going on and we hope to get those people in very shortly. Let's see. Update on capital projects. All right. We did close out the elementary school. We actually received an additional allotment, our best case scenario, which brought in $180,000 of additional revenue coming from MSBA that will be applied to the police station. So, we just got that signed off this week. So, as closing out the elementary school project, MSBA piece has been done. We still have some additional responsibility of, for the fields over at the elementary school is that we won't be taking those over fully until the summer, so that all the seeding can properly go. But that has moved forward very positively.
But the contractor will have to pay for that.
Contractors all paying for that, yeah. That's all under contract and been in reserve. So, again, the elementary school project with that additional $180,000 was something that through the hard work of everybody, we got that out. And that was higher than any number that I presented before from the board because until we got the final commitment and the audit done, we weren't sure how that's going to be. Keep in mind that this process this year, as I've stated before, is that we have to wait, DOR is going to come in and do a second certification of free cash for the Town of Carver this year because of this extenuating circumstances, so that we could move it forward with moving the police station forward for some of the additional cost for that. So, again, that is moving along. As it relates to the police station, we're having our kickoff meeting later this week with the design team, the contractor and all the appropriate staff that will be involved in inspections and oversight of the station. We have yet to pick a groundbreaking date and also we don't have a complete start date yet from the contractor. We'll be determining what that is on Thursday, but they are under contract and that is moving forward. I did execute the contract, I think, as I said at a previous selectments meeting. So, again, that is all moving along. As it relates to the playground area, as you see, most of the equipment has been installed. We are waiting for warmer weather to put down the infield, which will be sod, it's all prepped and ready. We're waiting to put down the pavement around the whole area. The pavement's actually being donated by, through Makepeace, through Reed Custom Soils. It's an aggregated mix that has a binder in it, so it's almost like shale, but it looks, but it's got a binder like asphalt. And then finally, we'll be putting the rubberized surface down once we get steady temperatures of 40 degrees or higher to be able to put that down. So, that is moving along. And that is our capital projects we have. Let's see. Moving forward, we're now in budget. Let's see. Moving forward, we're now in budget season. And as everyone is aware, we have a annual process. We go through our budget. And under the act that created the town administrator and the statute by a legislature that did that, under section 3.4.32, is financial management duties of the town administrator. I am to prepare and present the annual operating budget, which I do every year, and that has to be a balanced budget and identify all the different needs of the department and the towns. What I'm passing around is a document that you've all seen before. It is updated to now provide 15 to 16 years of data. You know, the budget that we have is, the majority of the budget is all tied into personnel, and therefore that's the biggest component of a budget. As we go through the budgets, each one of the department heads submits their operating budget to me. We sit down, we go over that, and you'll see that in a minute when I'm going to present that shortly. This document shows historically since 2007 up until 2022, what the average COLA has been for the column on the left or the section on the left. And the section on the right is what the COLA plus the steps are. Most departments on the town side all have a 2% step. The school negotiates something different than that. What you see here highlighted are the years where it was negotiated or agreed for employees or groups of people to take a 0% increase. What this document also is designed to do is to show the fairness between, the fairness between the different entities as we move forward. As you'll see, on the, the unions have all, and again, I'm not going to really speak to the teachers' union because it is a different, unique group. The, all the unions on the town side average in these timeframe for COLAs somewhere around 1.2 to 1.4%. And non-union was less than a percent. When you then look at that adding into steps, is that all of the unions on the town side averaged between 3.1 and 3.4%. The non-union was 2.6%. Due to the efforts of our finance team, which has been working overtime, and I think it's important to note, given the structure of our town, is we have many part-time people that are managing many of our departments and doing it very adequately with their professionalism that they bring to, to the town of Carver. But with that, many of our department heads and staff wear multiple hats, particularly a lot of our non-union employees. So with that, what we are able to do and what I am recommending, and it's something that I haven't done before, is I am looking to increase what I recommended last year, 2%, and make a recommendation of a 3% cost of living for non-union. With that 3%, it is shown here on this chart what that would mean. Again, that still brings it to point, 0.9%, which is lower than any of the other unions. And what my effort has been over the last couple of years is to try to create some fairness, given those nine years that the non-union employees did not receive any type of cost increase. So that's what you have shown from a cost of living standpoint as far as staff. And again, I can't, we were having a long finance meeting last night discussing this, and the amount of work that this town and town employees put into keeping the town running is, in my opinion, second to none to many other communities, and I think this is the least we can do to support their efforts. The next document that you have is the summary of.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I just wanted, could I make a comment on the.
Sure.
Finance committee aspect there. You were quoting from the town governing bylaws. And in 4.3.4, it says very specifically that boards, committees, and departments authorized to expend town money shall transmit in writing to the board of selectmen their estimate of the approximation, appropriation necessary for the conduct of their business for the next fiscal year at least 75 days prior to the date of the annual town meeting. It then says at least 60 days prior to the date of the annual town meeting, the board of selectmen shall assemble these requests in such a form as the finance committee may reasonably request and submit them to the finance committee, and so on. And so I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, why the finance committee members are hearing about the budget before we are.
I, I'm going to guess that the, when we adopted the town administrator rule, that that overrode the, that particular item.
It's still in our document.
I understand it's still in there, but I'm not, that's.
These were both, Mr. Chairman.
What the town administrator, I believe, was talking about was that he's responsible for creating that budget.
Correct.
I don't disagree. This is a timeline that I'm talking.
I understand. I hear you.
And we're supposed to hear about it first and then give it to the finance committee.
Mr. Town Administrator.
Sure. So that was crafted at town meeting three years ago to update a former regulation that was there. And having created and sat on the governance committee, the purpose for that and the intent behind that, and we all know these bylaws have, you have to look at what the intent is, is that years ago, the school committee would present their budget on town meeting floor. And that document, that language was never adhered to by the school in the past. So when Stephen Gray was chairman of the finance committee, along with John Connor and others, that they modified that for the sole purpose of making sure that the town had adequate time to review and address all of the budget issues. That has, and again, that has no impact on the end result of us putting our budget process together. I will tell you that there, that is not the only item that's in the bylaws that is not consistent with law. And there does need to be an overall bylaw review, and that's something that I am contemplating putting together a committee for to address those issues. It's something that our former clerk started to look at, and it is something to be addressed.
Mr. Dunham?
Yeah. I don't want to get into a big, long, lengthy discussion about this. But last night, the finance committee just started with the clerical, our finance department and the community living department.
Yep.
So they, they basically got two budget line items before we did, because now we have all the budget line items. I don't see, and I'm a little mystified, why it's a problem that the finance committee in the, in the, in trying to be very diligent and get things done in a timely fashion sees something a day before we do. That's my only comment.
So I guess also, too, is this is the same process we've used for the last several years. There, there really is no significant change. The bylaws are very clear in what the legislature authorized the town administrator to do. This works well with all our departments. As you recall, last year, the board of selectmen did not hold any public meetings for department heads. Those were all done in conjunction with the finance committee. The finance committee holds all the department head meetings, and obviously the members of the board of selectmen are invited to go in there because the finance committee gets into depth in, in taking a look at all the different departments. So again, that's, that's how we've done it. And that's, that's how it was presented tonight. And what I have tonight is to go over the rest of the budget. This year, it is a little bit later than I normally like to do, but if I, well, let me just finish. If I could just.
To what you just.
Yeah.
Let Sarah respond first.
Oh, sure.
So I guess my concern, Alan, is that we're the elected body, and it seems to me that we should be hearing about it first. Maybe, maybe I just didn't notice the past few years that it's been done like that, or maybe it hasn't been much discussion about it. But it feels as if some of our authority is being taken away.
It's, I don't, I beg to differ. I don't see where this affects our authority in any way, shape, or form. But if that's your opinion, well, that's fine and dandy.
I'm. Bob?
I'm not with this. I have another question. You said that for the many years of non-union that got zero, how many of the 12 were employees that got the narrow, the zero there? Is there a figure? Is it like six out of 12? Or is it three out of 12? Is it nine out of 12?
Of the zeros, it's probably 15. Well, it's probably somewhere around, I'm going to say 90 employees, maybe 100.
For non-union?
Yeah. Because it includes all the fire department.
Okay. That's what I want, I'm just, I'm just saying is how many do we have that would, this would affect the 3%?
Yeah. It's better, somewhere around 100 people. We got 75, 85 on the fire department, depending upon how you count, plus another 15 or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a vast majority of them. So if I could just, I.
If I could just quickly comment on that, I'm just, I'm happy to see you raise that to 3% because I know the sacrifices they went through on those many years of zeros. And I think it's, it's appropriate. They would try to catch up a little bit. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
No, thank you. And you know what? We're always trying to make sure, Carver pays less than other communities. We know that. You're, you're required to do more in Carver, hopefully have more fun. And from the survey that was done, most people enjoy working here. And, you know, where we can, through our, you know, if you look back at this, my first two years were zeros. And that was the restructuring that the board had to do when we had to lay off people. But based upon those layoffs and the restructuring, it now has catapulted us, this plus our solar and our financial acumen, to get to the point where we can start to make some changes like this.
And just getting back to Sarah's point, I, I think as long as that's, the way the bylaws are written, we need to do one of two things going forward. Either make an attempt to follow what the bylaw says, or bring it to the board and say, does the board, is the board okay if we use a different process?
Yep.
But it should come to the board to determine going forward. So I would ask you going forward to try to recognize that that technically is what the bylaw says and that we should follow it as best we can.
Completely understood. And just to add a little more color to that, yes, normally the board does see the budget beforehand. Normally, we have the budget prepared in December. But, you know, as you all know, there's been a lot of issues that have slowed down the government workings this year that have delayed a bunch of things. So the budget did come out late. I did get a recall from Alan Germaine this past Thursday knocking saying, hey, I need to get my agenda out, what departments you're going to be having coming there, because they had already scheduled a meeting for Monday. So the only two departments that I did give him were two that we've already talked about from the restructuring, which was the finance and also was the community living, which, again, just provided numbers to what you had already approved. That being said, I guess if anything, we're, we're 24 hours out of sequence. I normally do like to have this document approved by you, but just the timing this year didn't work. And we'll make strides to make sure that happens next year, and we get the budget ready in December.
So just the, just the numbers is the new thing. But that, that is what the budget's about. So it's not just the numbers. I mean, that's what's important.
No, no. We'd already, the board already approved the restructuring for those two departments. So it was just the numbers for the restructuring. What I'm trying to say, Sarah, is I didn't go into any other departments. We just kept it at the two that you've already approved.
Right. But we hadn't seen the numbers.
But you already approved the structure.
Right. But I, but I just addressed the point that in the future, let's not do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I anticipate next year that we'll, hopefully won't have as many of the delays that we had this year. So that'll be done in that timeframe next year. So what you have in front of you is what goes into the town meeting warrant after it's been reviewed and approved by the finance committee and also reviewed and approved by the board of selectmen. This is our overall operating budget for the entire town. That is on two pages, front and back. It does go through identifying what the, the first column is obviously the description that we have for each one of the categories. The second column is what was actually spent in 2019. The third column is what the budget as approved was for 2020. And then the, the final column is, the final, the third column is what the departments requested. And then the fourth column is actually what I am recommending based upon what they've requested. The fourth column is actually balanced, and that does equal a balanced budget. As you do know, we are in a Pago system, so the, the funding is balanced. It is equal. If anything is added, then you have to cut something. Doesn't mean you have to add something. So if you want to cut something, you can cut something. But if you're going to add something, then so be it. What I'd like to do is just kind of go through this analysis. What you're going to see in, in, in the selectmen's budget is that also includes the 3% across the entire town. So that is embedded in the 3% cost of living increase, which then gets allocated to all the different departments in those numbers. And again, we'll have time to go over this with the finance committee in more detail, or any individual questions you may have, more than happy to answer. As it relates to all of our utilities, we are anticipating this year that we'll be able to maintain the same rates that we did in 2019. The reason for that is the board has approved, is moving forward with the streetlight programs. We're going to be updating those to LED. We've also upgraded a bunch of our police cruisers, so those don't run 24/7. They only run when the battery draws down. And we are anticipating, although I couldn't talk about it tonight, some additional grants from the state that would help reduce our electric and other utility costs down. So we believe the $360,000 plus, given the fact that we have long-term contracts, we'll be able to handle them. Moving forward, the finance committee asked for an additional $1,000, and we need to make some adjustments for their, because they now have 11 people on the board. Normally, it's been five or six. So we had to actually add some additional salary in there and some recording secretary components and, and committee members. The finance committee right now has, we've, I'm sorry, the finance department, we are adding a deputy finance director in there. And with that, we are also adding some additional cost for outside assessing components that's tied into the operations. And again, this is a summary budget. You will be getting the detailed budget for you to take a look at and study. This is just a quick overview of the main budget tonight. For legal services, we're projecting $100,000 this year. We spent 93 in 2019. Now, that did include a bunch of union negotiations. In 2020, we did have some silliness that may increase the 2020 budget, but we're hoping 2021 will be more of a stable budget, which is why we have the $100,000 in there. Data processing, we have eliminated that budget. That's part of the merger with the town, I mean, with the school. The town has take, I'm sorry, the school has taken over the management and oversight of our data processing process, whereas the town has taken over the operation and maintenance piece. So when you and the school committee met in a joint meeting, that's tied into those changes, and that's why that's at zero this year. The town clerk help, this is a, a level funded budget compared to last year. The only difference there is that these are going to be new, two new people we're hiring that will not be at a higher step compared to what they were before. That's why there is a slight reduction compared to what the 2020 budget is. Again, there are no, beyond the two and a half full-time people plus additional support, that is the operating budget for that department. Elections, relatively the same. Planning, environmental, and permitting. Again, you had some new hires that dropped down in some of the salary categories. You will see that the department requested 416. The final number that I recommended was 413. Just to give you an idea, that $3,000 was adjustments that they had in their budget for copier operation leases. What we have done through the, through the capital outlay committee and through our IT department is all leases for any type of equipment in the town, such as copiers, will be going through the IT department. They'll be doing a blanket contract townwide until, once all of the individual contracts are done. So all that money, you know, is taken out, is no longer needed in the operation budget, and that is reallocated to the capital budget for that to happen. And that is done both school and townwide. So there's a townwide component of that. So if we look at total general government, in 2020, the budget was $2.6 million, $634 million. And this year, the recommended is slightly down at 2.608, based upon the items that I've just gone over. Moving forward to public safety, which is the next broad category, we have the police department in there. We did negotiate with the police department a increase in their union contract, so that's included in there, plus creating the position of a deputy police chief. That still needs to have town meeting approval from the standpoint of the union component of it, but the funding component was tied into that. We also have our fire department. And with the fire department, you know, for maintaining the service they do, it's a mere $705,000. As many of you have heard me say, that number in any comparable town would be somewhere between $2 and $3 million. And And you know, that and the $1,650 that they get for coming to a fire and only billing us for the hours that they report to is, you know, another major component, that and EMS, that allows the town the flexibility to keep our schools going and some of our other programs. Ambulance service is 844 projected. That is 100% funded through the ambulance fund. So, that gives us a total public safety of $3.9 million. That is up from the $3.745 that was for eight that was done in 2020. Moving forward for our Public Works. Our Public Works, it really is our Department of Operations and Maintenance. That is, you know, some changes that happens this year is that we did roll Dave Segantoff's salary in there, and we did take one part-time person and create it into a full-time person so that they have a full-time office manager. Beyond that, it's your typical union raises that are built into that. And that comes out to a figure of $1.439 million for the total budget for the Public Works Department. Moving along, we have our Department of Community Living. We have added, you know, this is the consolidated, that provides enhanced services for providing community living services to the town, which includes council and aging. It includes library. It includes veterans. It includes recreation. With that, as you guys had approved and as the Finance Committee approved, we're anticipating providing better services for the town going forward. That budget is $888,000 to move that department along as was permitted. And then finally, we get into the employee benefits. The first item is the Call Firefighters LoSAP. This is in essence, a annuity or a small retirement fund that if they put in 20 or 30 years of service, that for their service to the town, that they receive a small benefit for the town going forward. From there, we have our Plymouth County Retirement Assessment. This number includes what our projection is for this year from Plymouth County. It also includes some additional funds that we have set up in town meeting for some of the solar that will allow us to go forward and pay some additional funds into the pension system, which will now allow us to meet the objectives of our auditor so that we can have an independent assessment done just for Carver versus us being part of the main program and being part of the entire Plymouth County. Our health insurance premium, that is actually also going to be level-funded at $1.225 million. The department request you see there is actually not accurate, and you'll see that in the other, the detailed documents that I provide at a later point. This is not to say that healthcare is going down. This is not to say that healthcare is not increasing. What we did back in, in between 19 and 20 is you see that there was an increase of about $206,000 in the healthcare component. There was some anticipated increases that we were looking at. Some of those increases did not materialize to the extent that we thought they were. I still anticipate that our healthcare premium will go up by a handful of percent or slightly less than that. So, that's actually a good year. But the net of that is not requiring us to put in extra money into that. And this is one of the items that our Finance Director identified for us, which through this unique component this year, and again, it's a one-time thing, is really what the impetus was in the last 24 hours, 48 hours, to really be able to add that extra 1% in for our employees. So, that 1% just really materialized on Monday as a result of that. Beyond that, that gives us a total employees' benefits of $2.639 million, which is just up from what the budget was in 2020. With that, that gets us back to an $11.49 million total town budget. Then what you see are two subtractions that come out of there. It's $20,000 that comes from the Cemetery Repair Fund, or Revolving Fund. And then also EMS, which is self-supporting, which is $844,000. When those two numbers are subtracted from the 11.4, that gets us down to a $10.631 million budget, which surprisingly is the same number that's in the 10-year forecast.
Questions from the board?
A couple of items. One, I think you meant Cemetery Perpetual Care?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay. And under the Department of Community Living, this is also general. Could you break down the four departments, please, and give us salaries and so on for each of the departments?
Sure. The four departments are...
I mean in writing.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm going to provide the detailed. Maybe just need another day to work on the detailed backup for this. They will have that in there, and it'll list out the positions in there in writing so that you'll have those broken down. And again, just for the public certification, that is basically creating a better working relationship between the library, the council on aging, the veterans' office, and the recreation. So, those are the four entities.
Other questions?
I have a question. Under the Selectmen and Town Administrator, it was a drop from what was requested, about $5,000, looks like.
Yes, same thing, copiers, the same thing?
The same thing. That's what I figured. All right.
Yep.
Kind of funny, the toilet papers, about the same as our legal fund.
So, Bob, I did do a little research on toilet paper.
No, no, no. We already...
No, please.
Okay.
I just want to say, it's on the agenda. Sorry, can't talk about toilet paper.
Yeah. No, no, no. I just thought it was funny, the $90,000, whatever.
Someone can work a joke out of that.
All right. The next thing, under the Department of Community Living?
Yes.
Does that include the senior tax program or whatnot? The $500 program that the town has, or?
So, I'm going to just talk a little bit about that program just to provide something on that. It does not, the senior, I'm sorry, was it the tax write-off for the new program that was passed at town meeting?
Yeah, that got approved, the state housing...
Senior tax.
Senior tax.
Senior tax thing is not funded through the department, through these budgets. That is done through our overlay account.
Okay.
I just want for a public announcement tied into that, since you brought it up, is that when that was passed, the legislation states that you have to apply for it the year ahead of time. And then the following fiscal year is when that credit is actually given. We did have a deadline of December 1st for that, the first year that it was done. We did receive about 60 applicants. I'm not sure all qualified. But there was some confusion on that. We are going to extend that deadline until January 31st. So, there will be an opportunity, if you didn't apply for it, you can keep in mind there are income requirements to that. I am using this as a public service announcement.
My last one is, under the life insurance premiums, does that include all the employees, life insurance for all the employees? My thing is that our, the firefighters that are part-time, the Call Firefighters that we have, do they have a decent enough policy to cover them if something should happen with that? And I was wondering if that was included in this amount.
So, it's not included in that amount. That amount is tied into healthcare, and it's a small piece that everyone gets for that. So, again, that $500, $5,050, $500 is not going to come much. But the Fire Department, under state statute, has different protections that are in there for all public safety with an emphasis on the Fire Department. Do you want to add anything to that?
Every year, we renew our insurance policy. Police and fire chiefs decide if they want to increase their coverage. And I believe it was last year, the Fire Department did increase its coverage.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And that would be under the Selectmen's budget in our insurance account. That's without, you'd see that number.
Okay.
These are just general employment, employee benefits.
Other questions?
Yeah. Not to throw a potential monkey wrench into this, but this budget is based on the reorg that was approved by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen that still has to go to town meeting.
Correct.
How much are we going to be scrambling if town meeting decides not to vote for that? It's something we've got to be prepared for.
Well, I mean, I would say that every year, town meeting cannot support what the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, you know, generally unanimously vote, and also the school committee. It's purely a legislative body that can vote in any way, shape, form they choose to. If there are any major modifications with the budget, sometimes that forces another town meeting.
So, would the order of entry, I would hope we might consider having the reorg done before the budget in town meeting in the articles so we know what we're dealing with?
Yes. So, what we do, because we've done, every year, we've done a reorg of a different department. And the process we do for that is part of the budget article. And again, you can break these up, but part A is the organizational structure. Part B is the actual funding for that department. And part C is the enterprise funds, which don't necessarily apply as much. But the budget always has a two-part, the operating budget always has at least a two-part thing. One is the org chart, and the second is the other piece. Now, we have had a point in time, I think, at one point, where there may have been a member or two, or maybe just a member, that voted against the org chart but voted for the budget. But you know, to answer your question, it is a hypothetical. So, we would have to understand what changes were actually made by town meeting. You know, if they just eliminate, say, we don't want to do the community living department, or they want to change something up with that, we'd have to see what that is to determine whether or not that's something that A, can be adjusted on town meeting for, they just have to vote it down, and then we have to have another town meeting. Okay. Thank you.
And just, Michael, on the miscellaneous townwide, all the utility expenses, I noticed they're almost all down. Do those numbers relate back to savings under the Green Communities Act? Or are they separate things that are just causing those?
I wish I could talk about the Green Communities Act, but I can't. Tonight is not on the agenda. But I would, I would, I would say that you're not that far off.
Okay.
Could I just ask in the future that if you try to get this sheet included in the packet ahead of time so we can review it before the meeting?
And literally because of today and the issues, you saw me running in there?
Well, I know, but ideally, this would be done last week. But also, since you're going to be providing us with the detail broken, breaking down, I realize sometimes that's going to be the size that can't be read properly other than, can't be printed out at home. So, if you could let us know ahead of time that it's stuck in our packet so we can come pick it up, I think that would be helpful for us to be able to review this stuff before we see it for the first time at the meeting.
You will be getting a four-page, 11-by-17 document that has all this rolled up in there.
Right. And I guess my suggestion is not the night of the meeting, but ahead of time.
No, we'll have that in the next couple of days.
Are we going to get it online?
Yeah, we can send it to you. Yeah. Elaine just pointed out something to Mark that she wants me to address. One is telephones. So, although telephones are not part of the Green Communities Act, they are part of our technology upgrade. And you've heard me talk about this before is, due to the significant savings we had over the elementary school, the School Building Committee moved forward with enhancing that centralized data hub so that now that's the backbone of the entire town. Every piece of wire that comes in the town hall goes over there to be stored. What that has allowed us to do in both the school and the town, in both schools and the town, is to get rid of a bunch of our copper lines that we had. So, we had a bunch of individual phone lines that we had to have through an old centric system or something down the basement. That's now been ripped out, and what we now have is voice-over IP so that we have less lines we actually have to pay for and those run over the internet. Of course, we still have some copper lines that we need to have for public safety standpoint. But you know, a significant piece here of the telephone is the work that Elaine's been doing in helping to reduce down those telephones, lines, and working with Steve Mahoney for that. So, that's one component. What was the other one? Oh, and the streetlights, and this is pre-Greens Community Act, is that...
I'm trying to slip the Greens Community Act update into this.
Is that the board did vote to move forward with, and we're upgrading a bunch of our incandescent lights to LED. So, that's anticipated to have a significant return on investment and reduction in electricity cost. In addition to that, Brad Brothers and I, and I'll give all credit where credit's due, is Brad takes the lead in this, is that we do go forward and negotiate power agreements for the town to lock in fixed rates at off-season so we can have a, so we have a known value as to what our utility charges are. And then Elaine and John Woods does the same thing for our diesel and gasoline. I did have an interesting question last night from the Finance Committee, and they wanted to know where was diesel? And I said, it's not in there. And the reason for that is that prior to my arrival, is that the school and the town made an agreement to, the school pays for the diesel and the town pays for the gasoline. It just keeps things a little bit easier, you know? And we then went back at one point a few years ago and just tried to do a test to see how accurate that was. You know, trying to figure out how many gallons each vehicle we're using in the school bus versus the police car versus the DPW. It actually came out to a similar type, type cost. So, that's why diesel's not in here.
Thank you.
And where it says propane, where it says natural gas, oh, that was changed. It said propane last night. It's been changed.
All right. Next?
Next.
Do we need to vote on that?
No. No, we're going to be getting further details.
Well, you know what? Let's...
Now, I was going to say, because if we don't vote on it, then that means we haven't done the budget, which means, does that mean the Finance Committee can't have any more meetings?
No, because we haven't even seen the detail on it.
So, here's what you guys have historically done, is that when I present this summary, which is this document, you guys vote on this to move it forward, to be reviewed by the Finance Committee and start the whole process. And then at the end of the day, when this comes back to this group in beginning of March, is that you then have to take the final vote to incorporate it into the article. So, your vote tonight is a preliminary article, which addresses Sarah's concern that this vote tonight should have come before yesterday's meeting so that the Finance Committee can continue to review what's their next department's up for public safety, I think, in the next week or so. And again, this is not the final vote, the budget, because you're going to have another crack at this. It's just that this is a balanced budget going forward and that it incorporates other things. You can come back and vote different line items in the future. That's not to say that you're in agreement with all this. You're just in agreement that it moves forward for further discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, again, the bylaw doesn't say we have to vote on it first. It just says we have to see it first. And I feel like, to the particular question I asked about breaking down those four departments, I don't have enough information tonight. It's the first time I've seen it. And I don't have enough information to vote on it.
I'd suggest that you get, you know, we understand the timeline and everything. Everyone's moving forward. The board understands everyone's moving forward. So, I'd suggest that maybe you get the breakdowns to us, and we can vote on the next meeting.
In the meantime, the Finance Committee will be reviewing the next group of departments.
That's understood.
Okay. Recently, the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District voted to cease all transfer station operations in 2021. That'll be January 1st, 2021, after the Cavanta subsidies expire. And there was a lot of discussion on that. That being said, is that Carver residents will no longer be able, Carver, Marion, and Wareham residents will no longer be able to bring their refuge to the regional district. That regional district, you know, will most likely have a limited role that's being currently discussed by the district itself to bring back to the towns that would focus on dealing with their existing liabilities and closing down the landfill. That all being said, is that, you know, as I've been working on this for the last couple of years, after we realized the theft that had occurred there, we've been looking at alternative options for the towns to pursue. And you know, it was identified that the cost of operating the facilities as is was not something that could be afforded without the subsidies. We looked at all different scenarios. That being said, is that I have been in touch with neighboring communities. Talked to two yesterday. I have another one that I'm talking to, I think, next week. And a fourth one, on the possibility of seeing if they would open their existing facility to Carver residents in 2021 and what the cost of that would be. Or some of these other communities that are leaving, are they going to open their own facilities? Clearly, as I've stated to this board, you know, over the last couple of years, Carver's not in a position to open our own landfill. You know, we have seven or eight guys that currently operate the town. I have been responsible for managing and overseeing, even before this regional district, running facilities. It's not an easy thing to do. It's a very unrewarding and hostile environment for employees because they get berated all the time from people trying to throw away their garbage. So, again, in Carver, we don't have the wherewithal to... So, again, in Carver, we don't have the wherewithal to open up our own facility unless there was some type of an operational override. I've also reached out to some of the private entities for their hauling services, to see if we can get them to make a commitment on what a rate would be for Carver in 2021. I don't have all those figures. My goal is, over the next few months, to work with surrounding communities and private sector entities to come up with, hopefully, a list, or a few items, that we can present back to you, and then with your approval, then give the residents some additional opportunities that hopefully will be at different cost points to determine what their end use is going to be. You know, right now, you know, when you look at the cost of what garbage is, and some people right now are paying $6 to $8 a week, you know, some potentially could be paying $10 a week. Those are the types of things, if you're going to have private haulers that you'll be dealing with. If you're dealing with a location that has a, you have to buy a sticker, and then you have to buy bags, you're probably going to spend, on average, $3 or so for the sticker. And then depending upon the number of bags you buy, those can be between $2 and $4 a bag, depending upon how the system works out. So there's a whole bunch of scenarios that are in play. At the end of the day, Carver has and does not provide trash pickup. It's not something that's built into our budget, but as Bob has brought up many times, and the board's discussed in the past, is we want to at least make sure that we have options in the future that we can provide residents as to where to go. And that is my update on that.
Any discussion for the board?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Bob.
So we received the Selectmen a letter from Wareham inviting us to go to see Wareham, and they're very interested in joining with Carver to have a transfer station at Route 28. There is a good benefit to that, is number one, the facility's already there. It already has the permits, so there is some savings there that we can utilize. I think I would like the board to, someone to make a motion, that the board have one of us, along with the town administrator, reach out to Wareham to have a meeting with them to discuss the joint mutual agreement for a transfer station.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask Bob Belbin and the town administrator to meet with the town of Wareham about a joint agreement with the town of Wareham and the town of Carver on this issue.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, on...
Well, that's a motion, needs a second?
Mm-hmm. I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, as, so, Mr. Belbin has information that he shared with you, that what he's been told by a member of the Board of Selectmen in Wareham, and that's what they believe is going to happen. I've also been having conversations with the town administrator in Wareham, who's also been talking to the rest of the Select Board in Wareham. The letter that Bob is referencing that you did receive, did, was written prior to the district making a decision not to do any transfer, and what that would end up with the facility. That all being said, is I do have a meeting set up next week with the Marion, I'm sorry, the Wareham Town Administrator, and I did invite Bob already to that meeting, as well as the, a member of the Board of Selectmen in Wareham. Because now that the district is no longer functioning, it does fall under, you know, the operations of the town to come forward and provide some solution. So, again, that meeting is already scheduled. Mr. Belbin, I did invite Mr. Belbin to that meeting as well, with the other town administrator.
So, Mr. Chairman, and that's where I kind of have an issue with, is that the town of Wareham sent us an invitation to meet with them, and you can call semantics, but I didn't appreciate the invite from the town administrator to go to his meeting with Wareham when we already got an invitation from Wareham. So that's why I was hoping to get the board members to approve a meeting with Wareham to discuss this, instead of the...
Well, yeah, again, I think you are getting into semantics, because before you came on the board, the board in the past has directed the town administrator to act on the board's behalf in trying to find resolution to this, because we're coming to the end, as everyone knows, but just to reiterate one more time, we're coming to the end of a 30-year agreement that we had with the Marion, with the district, that gave residents of the towns of Carver, Wareham, and Marion severely discounted costs in bringing, in disposing of their trash, both whether you had pickup because the local vendors were able to get that discount, or if you were taking it yourself by buying a sticker. And so that, there may be a little confusion in the sense that the board has tasked the town administrator in the past to act on its behalf, so I don't think there was any intentional slight on this. But, that being said, I, we owe this town, the town residents that do take their own trash, which is about 25% of the town, we...
I'm sorry, that number's wrong.
I saw your number of 1,800. Half the town does not use the district.
1,800 stickers were sold.
When?
Okay, last year. 1,800 stickers were sold. We have 3,400 households, or 3,500 households, somewhere around that point. So if you really look at the household...
But didn't they, weren't they also beat stickers?
Right, but...
So maybe they didn't take their trash?
A lot of people...
I bought one, I bought one, and I don't take my trash every week, I have pickup.
Also, Mr. Chairman, if I can, a lot of people buy two stickers because they have two vehicles of which they're taking, so I mean...
Yeah, I thought we used to have this law...
I have no idea what that percentage would be.
At a previous count that we did down there, it was about 900 people, 900 residents over a four-week period on a weekly basis, we had about 900 residents dropping off their trash.
That's right, but they're not, we don't know if it's the same 900 people that are going, because I go every two weeks, so I'm going to show up every two weeks, and someone else is going to be showing up every week. So we don't know that full-time.
No, but I think it's, I think that 900 is more valid than 1,800.
So, Mr. Chair, since the meeting's already set up, and Bob is now asking us to vote as to whether that meeting is okay, can we just vote on that?
Well, as soon as I finish what I have to say, if I may. Is that okay? Yes? I guess rudeness only works one way.
So, Mr. Chairman...
No, let me finish, please.
I'm sorry.
You too? The point I'm trying to make is that that deal's coming to an end. We have been warning the residents for over three years now that the prices are going to go up dramatically if we don't come up with an option, and we need to exhaust every single possible option and not let egos get in the way of who did what when, in order to make sure that when we get to the end of 2020, we have the best possible viable options to give to our residents at the least expense for those that would like to choose to continue to take their own trash. Hopefully, there will be such a solution. That's what we all want to work toward. But I'll also reiterate, I do not want another North Carver landfill situation where the town of Carver commits based on the idea that we're going to have 1,800 people buying stickers, and only 700 buy stickers, and the town of Carver has to then subsidize those that want to take their own, and it ends up costing us money. So that, we need to make sure that, and this has been the problem, we've had this discussion, Bob, as you know, all along, and even you admitted, you don't want any part of the town of Carver having to subsidize people that want to take their own trash. And by the way, you had mentioned what the cost was with waste management. I called waste management, apparently, since I got in on the original preferred deal, they're going to keep my pricing where it is. New residents might pay more, but as Mr. Milonowski said, he is seeking to approach these people to see if they will give the town of Carver a preferred deal going forward. So we need to, we need to not just explore something with Wareham, we need to talk to Marion, we need to talk to the local waste vendors, we need to talk to everybody to make sure that we have options at the end of the year. We need to exhaust everything, so that if residents that are now paying, well, $10 this year, but generally it's been $50 a year for a sticker, are suddenly having to pay $200, $300, or $400, that we can tell them we did everything we could, short of the town subsidizing that cost, to get them an option.
And I totally agree with you. I do. I want to make the best options, I want the least cost for the residents that we can get them. The best bargain is the best for our residents, but I don't want to be locked into a trash hauling system that ultimately you get two or three of the big threes, and that's it, and then the price then goes to wherever, and we don't have any competition and options, so...
Well, in the past, and I think we saw this at town meeting last year, when we asked town meeting, just, would they like us to just look into a one trash hauler town? They wanted no part of that. People like their local vendors, they like, they have, there are companies that are operating in this town that have been operating for 20 and 30 years, and there's a lot of loyalty to those companies. And if there's an, if there's an option that we can come up with that doesn't hurt those companies, where they can continue to get discounts and keep them in business, I think that's a preferred way to go as well. So we, but the bottom line is, we need to make sure that when we get to the end of the year, we feel we have exhausted every alternative, and we have the very best possible and least expensive option for those that want to take their own trash at the end of the year. And also for those that have their trash picked up, to make sure that that doesn't jump at the same time. But again, this, you have to look at this in the context that we had a 30-year deal because we were hosting a landfill that we're no longer hosting, and unless we decide to host another landfill, it's doubtful that we're going to get the kind of breaks that we've had in the past.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
In regards to the original motion that was seconded, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
If we don't vote pass that motion, will you be not going to the meeting with the town administrator?
No, because, no, I'll still go to it. I just, like I said, it's just the fact that it is what it is, all right, but...
And again, my, if I may interrupt, my suggestion is, let's move past the, let's just, I have no problem with Bob going, I think we need to get, I think it's a good idea. We need to get to the end, so, any further discussion?
Yeah, can we just vote? That's just a question, or?
Just one...
Just for that, I'm going to talk for another five minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Although, yes?
Just, I just want to throw this out again.
This better be helpful.
Well, this is helpful. Again, after talking to the town administrator in Wareham, his opinion is that the letter that was sent to this board on December 9th is no longer, is null and void now, because of what the vote the district did, is he now needs to go...
You already said that.
He needs to go back to his board to see what they want to do, which is why...
I actually didn't state that before.
I thought you said the meeting was already set up.
No, this is a meeting...
This is a meeting with the two town administrators, and with that, we have an agenda light up...
You would invite Bob and the other gentleman to join.
Right, right.
But the town administrator is saying that the letter that the Board of Selectmen members sent us before...
I understand that, yeah, I understand.
Okay, well, you seem to be confused.
I don't understand how that ties into what we're voting on now.
I'm not sure what we're voting on, to allow Bob to...
You have a meeting with the town administrator of Wareham, in which Mr. Belbin and Mr. Moniz will be attending as well.
So...
Is that what we're voting on, or are we voting on a separate, I mean, Bob set up a separate meeting?
No.
No, it's the same meeting.
So are we going to vote on every meeting that I have with the town administrator?
No, we're just doing it in this particular case.
I agree, it sounds kind of silly, but that's fine. A motion was made and seconded.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain, because I just think it's a silly vote.
I'm an aye.
All right, the, the motion carries.
Bob, the meeting again is on the 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Yes, sir.
All right, we move on to an update and vote on executive session minute review of town council. Town council has indicated a bunch of minutes that can be released either on a whole or redacted basis. Do we want to take these as a whole, or would you like me to go through them individually?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I personally need to go through them individually, because I wasn't at some of them, so, and then there are a couple of questions about some others.
All right, the executive session minutes of January 15th, 19, 2019.
Have you got those there, Elaine?
Yeah.
And did you make that change?
No, I will.
Okay.
Whatever you vote on will be...
Mr. Chairman, while she's grabbing those, so, the redacted versions of them, is that what we're voting on here with the redactions?
Whatever town council says can be released with the redactions, correct.
Okay.
Okay, everybody can vote except...
No, even, except Bob on the one from January 15th.
Right. Why can't Bob vote on it?
Because Bob wasn't here. Board then.
All right, there are motion to approve...
Motion to approve the January 15th.
Is, all right, further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the release of the executive session minutes for February 5th, 2019.
Sarah was absent.
Alan, I have my own list.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
Thank you.
I didn't know you had copies.
Yep, I was not there, and so I will have to recuse myself.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Bob abstained.
Yeah.
Okay. Minutes of April 2nd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Approve and release portions pertaining to the police union. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes of April 11th, 2019, approve and release portions regarding TA evaluation and contract negotiations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
I was not there, so I'll recuse myself from the vote.
There's no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes of April 16th, approve and do not release as of yet.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I also have an amendment to that, and I left Elena note that I have to be included on those in attendance, because somehow it got left off, because it shows I made motions during that executive session.
And I, the minutes indicated that I was present, but I was only present at the very beginning.
You know, this, you once recused yourself from the vote, so you were there at the start, but then you left.
Correct, but I left permanently. It has a second recusal in there that, not sure why, but I simply showed up at the beginning and recused myself from the whole thing, that's all.
Someone want to make a motion to approve with those amendments, as a men?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The executive session minutes of May 7th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Executive session minutes of May 21st, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, it was unclear to me where paragraph A was, and it looks to me like there are two paragraphs Cs. I mean, it could just be a typo, but I just wanted to bring that up.
This is on the 21st, right?
Correct. I actually don't have it in front of me, but, in other words, um...
Could you pass that copy down, so Sarah can see?
So what part of this is paragraph A? I guess I don't, I'm not seeing like an A, you know?
Yep.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm...
Okay.
So does that, the amendment need to be, the motion need to be reworded?
With amendments?
Yeah, with the amendment that Elaine was going to...
Motion to approve. Paragraph A?
Yeah.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Executive session minutes of June 4th, approve and release portions related to the police union contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes of August 6th, 2019, approve and release portions regarding litigation strategy, no personal information. It's a pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Same one.
All right.
Recused, whatever.
The executive session minutes of September 3rd, 2019, approve and do not release.
Motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion?
And Mr. Clark and myself cannot vote.
Yes, so, I had one, one minor point that I wanted added in, that Hewens asked why the two employees that were mentioned in that session were not present at the session. I said that in the meeting. I just wanted that in the minutes.
Motion as amended?
As amended. Second. I have a question. It says motion to approve and do not release. Is there any release time, or is that always going to be held in, in the queue?
I think, I, I don't, I don't have this one memorized, but I'm guessing it, since it deals with individuals, that, that's protected and that can't be released. Elaine, is that correct?
Personnel, right.
Personnel, okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion seconded, no further discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Executive session minutes of October 15th, 2019, approve and do not release.
Motion to approve. Wait, that was November 5th?
This is October 15th now.
Oh, sorry, okay.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I cannot vote.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Executive session minutes of November 5th, approve and release only portions of settled litigation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That was less painful than I anticipated.
Thank you.
All minutes released will be placed on file in the Town Clerk's office. And now, our minutes of December 17th, 2019. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Our next meeting coming up will be on January 21st, and then we'll have our normal two meetings extending out for the remainder of the year, with the good possibility that we will have extra minutes, extra sessions as we get into the budget season. And now, we move to community announcements. Mr. Dunham?
Just a reminder that next Tuesday, anybody wishing to run for office, and you can check the town website for all the different positions that are up for election, you can go down to the Town Clerk, Clerk's office, and go ahead and get your nomination papers. And I also hope that everybody had a very good Christmas and Happy New Year.
That's it. Mr. Townsend?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Belbin?
Just one thing with the Carver Sportsman Club, is they're having their annual game dinner on January 31st. It's a Friday, so if you want tickets, go to their website and...
What kind of game will there be?
Typically, there's venison, sometimes moose and bear, pheasant, gross...
And you get a flavor, you get a tasting of everything?
Rabbit. You get a little bit of everything, and if you want to take some home, there's usually plenty left over.
It's always interesting.
Most definitely.
All right, the only thing I have is that we have the luncheon that we set up with the Old Colony School. Bob, are you still planning on going?
Yes, sir.
All right, and I'm going, and I believe we may be it at this point.
Yeah, I'm working and not able to attend.
And you, if I'm released from jury duty, I'll be there.
If you're released from jury duty, then you'll be there. Sarah, were you going to be able to make the Old Colony Luncheon on Thursday?
And then you'll get the lead.
Okay. All right, I just, if someone can let me know, I've got to let them know, but it does, I mean, I think if it's going to be that small a number, because I checked with the FinCom and the school committee, and they're not sending anybody, so it's going to be a relatively small luncheon. I will get, as soon as, so, I, what I'll do is, I'll let them know that it looks like two definite and two possibilities. I'm sure that they have the flexibility to be able to expand if they need to.
I will, I will email you that morning, once I find out my availability, so...
I wouldn't think you'd be a good candidate for a jury court, personally. I would not want you in my jury. Executive session, exemption number two, motion moved to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel and for non-union negotiations, police chief, fire chief, and finance director, that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene an open session for purpose of adjournment. Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, this calls for a roll call vote.
We have to read the second one, too?
No, that's been eliminated, hasn't it?
Correct.
Yes, that's been eliminated as a result of the action of the DEP.
We, we have not, we have not decided as a board that that's been eliminated, have we?
Yes. Yeah, that was, that was being called for as a result of what we thought was an outright violation of DEP. And we've now learned that that letter that they, they posted should not have been posted, and they want to get together with us before determining if there's anything to act upon. So, there's nothing to act upon.
If the chairman went ahead and added it at the last minute, I would think...
I understand that, Alan. Do we, do we need, do we have that in writing from the DEP?
Do we have it in writing?
Yeah. That, that, that was posted accidentally. Didn't look accidental.
That's what we were told today. It was posted accidentally, that someone posted it that should not have posted it.
We're discussing things we, we don't have on the agenda to discuss. The discussion right now is, should this be...
The executive session is on the agenda.
Can I finish, please? The discussion is, is there an emergency to go into executive session, and there is not, because DEP has postponed the meeting, so there's no time-sensitive issue for this to do. I read in my statement that it's been postponed for over two weeks. So, there's no time-sensitive issue, this has to go into executive session 48 hours. Therefore, it's not a valid reason for executive session per Town Council that we spoke to before the meeting.
Okay, did you get that in an email from DEP?
I have spoken to DEP with a member...
Did you get it in an email from them?
I'm telling you what they told me.
Could you get it in an email from them?
I can get into the email when the new date is, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also, I have an issue with this. I think that we should discuss what was posted here online regarding the town and...
Well, again, I thought the statement by the Town Administrator at the start pointed out that, that this was a false alarm. There is, there, this, we may well be able to explain to DEP what the issues were, and there is no issue to discuss. And, as Town Council said, because there's no meeting tomorrow, we have now lost the 48-hour requirement to, to hold the meeting and not having posted ahead of time.
And also, the Town Administrator in his statement explained what happened, and why no, none of us knew about this beforehand. He's gone ahead and read a statement, I believe he told me that statement will be put on, posted on Facebook, on social media, so I don't know what there's, if, if, if the meeting was still going on tomorrow, you bet, but I would still say that should be discussed, would have been discussed in open session, because I didn't, I think, in transparency. But the Town Administrator has transparently gone ahead and said it in his opening statement. So, I mean, it's out there, admitted, there were two screw-ups that happened, one by DCR, one happened in Town Hall.
Well, Alan, I'm sorry, I was going to cut you off here.
No, that's all right.
It's the fa, it's the fact that, will this be on the next agenda that we go into executive session to discuss this whole process?
Only, only if it appears that, the, the original reasoning for this was because we didn't know about it, and a meeting was taking place tomorrow. And, and it appeared that the town had been negligent in its response.
This is something that we should be discussing in executive session about this whole issue.
Which, which, what in particular?
What we're talking about now.
The claims, the claims that are in here, all right, that should be discussed in executive session.
The, they don't need to be discussed in executive session until that meeting takes place between DEP and the Town of Carver, so that the Town of Carver can address, it never, it, we should never even have known anything about this, because DEP contacts the Town of Carver, contacts the Town Administrator and Kevin Forg, the health agent, and says, here are our issues, do you have any backup material that can address these issues? And then, they determine whether or not there's actually been a violation. This was posted too quickly, the, the, the DEP has retracted it, and there's going to be a meeting, and after the meeting, the results will be told for us, and if we need to have an executive session after that meeting, I'll be glad to call it executive session.
But Ron, I'm sorry, I mean, I, I just maybe am perhaps more untrusting than some, but I would like to see this in writing.
All right, the Town Administrator said he will obtain it in writing.
Those documents are on this, on, it's more than one document up on the DEP.
I, I downloaded the, I have the entire document right here, if anybody would like to go through it.
As do I.
All right?
Same here.
So, we all have, we all have the document.
But certainly, the 48-hour rule does not apply. That meeting is not taking place tomorrow, so there's no reason for an emergency executive session to take place tonight.
The 48-hour rule is just that you didn't know about it within 48 hours.
Mr. Chairman, and, and if you read the Attorney General's statement, nothing should be addressed within 48, they, they urge you not to address anything within 48 hours unless it's time-sensitive.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do not take up this item in executive session tonight.
I, I don't even think that's necessary, it's, it's...
Well, they seem, they seem that if three people were for it, they could be forcing the executive session to continue.
No, I...
So, Mr. Chairman, okay, we only have two weeks and a day if this meeting, when this occurs, this meeting, okay?